About 10 seconds. Soon as Ken gives me the thumbs up, he's giving me the thumbs up. Thank you, Ken. Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Brianna, would you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Here.
Here.
Mansfield?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Paulson?
Here.
Here, thank you. That was a question mark. Do I ask this or not? Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance, after which if you would remain standing for an invocation, will be offered by Pastor Jim Jones representing Blaze Grace Ministries. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just want to thank you for having me back. It's a new year. But you know what? No matter when or what, God is still in control. We need to remember that. Let's pray. Lord God, be, thank you for tonight, for the time we have to do business, to continue to grow and flourish this city. We ask you, Father God, that you would be with each and every board member, every council member, that you would just give them the knowledge and the discernment that they need for the things that are being discussed. Ask, Lord, also, that you would be with all those that are here tonight and let them make it home safely. Father, we thank you and we glorify you and your name. And we are grateful that we still, as a nation, are still trying to stay with you, being under you. Let us never try to put ourselves ahead of you, Lord. Let us always remember that you are the one that created all things. So, Father, I thank you for tonight. And I ask you, Lord God, that all the things that would be done tonight would be pleasing to you. And we thank you for your son and for the glorious salvation that he gave us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Rev. We will move to agenda item number three is the consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, material claims. Council may wish to approve the material claims for the period of January 1 through 15, 2024. B, treasurer's report. Council may wish to approve the treasurer's report for December 23, showing cash and investments as of December 31, 2023. C, Pocatello Development Authority Board appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Linda Lurick to serve as a member of the Pocatello Development Authority Board, replacing Rick Cheatham. Linda's term will begin January 19, 2024 and will expire May 1, 2028.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Council President?
I move that we approve the consent agenda items A through C as outlined in agenda item number three.
Second.
We have a motion by Council President Lurick and a second by Council Member Mansfield. Brianna, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item four is proclamations. We have no proclamations tonight, so agenda item five is a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On February 1, 5:30 PM clarification meeting, 6 PM regular council meeting. February 8, 9 AM, city council work session. Other events, applications for Pocatello's Promise of Tomorrow mayoral scholarship for Students program are being accepted through March 1. As a reminder, keep sidewalks clear of snow and ice. When clearing sidewalks and driveways of snow, please do not place the snow in the streets. It becomes a driving hazard. We'll move to agenda item number six is a public hearing. Proposed fiscal year 2024 January budget amendments. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding proposed fiscal year 2024 budget amendments. I declare the public hearing open. Gene?
Honorable Mayor and Council. I'd like to, again, Gene Hill from the finance team, like to thank our team for putting this together. I made a, let me start off by, I made one of your questions during the work session. I need to clarify that because I misspoke. So Fund 972 of the unplanned retirement is for the enterprise funds. Fund 952 is for the government employees. And also, there was one employee who was terminated or left out of the enterprise funds, 12 out of the government funds. I just wanted to clarify that, make sure that was corrected. And with that, again, as we have done in the past, every year the city funds its necessary to amend the budget to account for unanticipated grants or other situations. Although the city may be awarded a grant, the council must still authorize the new expenditures in the budget. Budget amendments process is similar to that of the original budget. We do two public notifications, hold a public hearing to adopt the amended ordinance. As we presented in the work session, the original budget or funds being affected is 115 million, point five. The requests are 7.3 million. And then the adopted budget totally impacted would be 122.9 million. Are there any questions?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify, so the numbers that are subject to this public hearing tonight, those are the same numbers that we have discussed in our workstation? Nothing has changed?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
And really, we're just talking about the 7.3?
Million.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions for Gene while he's there? Okay, I have another question. Gene, have you received any written correspondence in your office that the council has not seen?
No.
Madam Clerk, have you received any in your office you have not seen?
No.
Okay, thank you. Then we will move on to any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application?
Lydia Noble, Pocatello, Idaho. In the process of looking at the budget amendments, we did a little bit of research with several other cities in Idaho regarding budget amendments. And one of the replies we received to the question, does your city do budget amendments? Was, great question. No, we do not do budget amendments. When we know that it will take more than one budget year to complete projects, which is very, very common, we simply budget for this. No amendments are made. They are planned for. Typically, when an item is ordered or project is planned, there are documents that explicitly state delivery times and completion dates, so it's not at all difficult to do. I'm perplexed that your city does not appear to be doing this and require so many budget amendments. So I just wanted to come up and call attention to that. So I'm neither for nor against the budget amendments. I just think that it is an inordinate amount of them and that when I've looked at the budget, there are many things that have been discussed previously that we could have anticipated that should have been built into the budget that just don't seem to be and they end up in budget amendments. And that just, to me, is kind of sloppy budgeting, if you will, from all of my past training, working with budgets in finance and accounting. So I'm just going to call that attention to you and request that council seriously consider perhaps looking at how other cities do their budgets and why they don't have either so many or no budget amendments. And maybe something can be gleaned from that, their practices that we could potentially use because this is really an inordinate number of budget amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others uncommitted? Any opposed to the application?
Nikki Tason, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho, 83201. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm opposing several things in the budget amendments. I would like more information on what you mean by unplanned payouts. What do you mean by that? Are people retiring and what's being paid out? There's several of those with fire, animal shelter, ambulance, and enterprise funds with, he just discussed. And also, as a constitutional republic, we have in the Fifth Amendment of our constitution that government cannot take our property without just compensation and for public use. And so as a person, say I do landscape work and you use public funds, for instance, with the golf courses or things like that, parks, that should be being contracted out to private enterprise. Same thing with road construction, recreation, garbage, property development, loan type things, the community development, block grant. Those are public funds being used and that we, the people, really didn't have a say. It was taken from us unconstitutionally and then all these different things that it's used for. Well, those who are in the private industries are losing their businesses because you're competing against us. And I appreciate all true service, but I value our local people. And we have some really awesome contractors here in town and other private businesses. And so to save money in the budget, in that, and there's the constitution, that you contract out the garbage, that you contract out all the recreation. I didn't realize you even had recreational equipment, like kayaks and things that you could rent. You know, ISU does that. We have Berry Sports and other entities that will rent equipment. And granted, ISU is even a publicly funded organization and they shouldn't be doing it. And so the Ross Park Swimming Pool, I know in the past you guys have even had budget problems because people, you weren't making enough revenue to pay for the cost of the Ross Park Swimming Pool because you've got a free big swimming pool up at the wellness complex. And so I would sell that off, private enterprise, and watch it flourish. And so that would put those funds that you're saving millions of dollars on back in our pockets so that we can develop Pocatello into an amazing, beautiful place for families and for local business, to have the health and prosperity and happiness, beautiful town that we want, where everybody can have the blessings that God would have us have under this constitution he inspired. And as that Christian constitutional republic, it would be the people who are sovereign and supposed to be united and indivisible and making it what he would have us be blessed with. And I share that in the name of Jesus.
Thank you very much. Any others opposed to the application? Okay, then I would move down to Gene. Would you like to step up and maybe answer a couple of these questions?
Absolutely. First off, when there are shortages of supplies, cars and vehicles, there is no way any municipality or any company can plan for that. So therefore, an amendment is necessary because at the end of the year, those funds are going back to the reserve. And so we have to reallocate those and bring them back when we finally find out that inventories are available. And as far as other cities not doing this, there are plenty of cities that do this. San Diego, Mission Vallejo, Meridian. And they do it because it allows you to budget closer to what you actually have because a budget is a forecast, it's an estimate. And so this allows us to actually run a city more efficiently when unplanned events or things happen. As far as the unplanned retirement, what goes into that are all of the employees who have worked up a bank of sick leave or vacation when they leave. We pay out of that as well as people who maybe for medical reasons have to retire was unplanned. Thank you very much, Council.
Yeah, over just a minute. Any questions, Council President?
Before Gene goes away. Another thing that we can't always plan on are grants. So we do have to do a budget amendment. It's not just about spending money, but taking in money and being able to use that money. And we might not know if we apply for a grant in October, you know, or, well, whenever. But when we're doing the budget, we may not know that we're going to either apply for that grant and/or get that grant. And so it can't be planned for. So that's another main reason to do amendments. I just wanted to add to your explanation there. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, I declare the public hearing closed. We will move to agenda item number seven is request for council exception to City Firearms Code Idaho Department of Fishing Game. Pursuant to City Code 9.32.030, council may wish to consider a request by Idaho Department of Fishing Game, IDFG, to allow an exception to City Code 9.32.020. Discharge of firearms prohibited to allow IDFG to issue and administer permits to allow landowners and their designees, as identified on permits, to lethally remove turkeys and attempt to bring the population back into balance. The exception would cover the Johnny Creek drainage area within the city boundaries. Permits will be issued by IDFG and will be for the specific, for specific fixed locations within the area and governed by fixed rules. Detailed on any permit issued, IDFG will notify the city of all permit applications prior to issuance. And could we have made that any longer?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to see if we could have Fishing Game to come up and to give us a brief overview of what this looks like, especially for those concerned citizens who live within that Johnny Creek area.
Mayor, commission members, appreciate the opportunity to come and talk with you tonight. We are requesting an exemption from the-
Dan, would you, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but would you just say your name for people watching on TV?
My apologies. Dan Garen, Regional Supervisor with the Idaho Department of Fishing Game. What we're looking for tonight is an exception to the shooting ordinance that covers the city of Pocatello. In the Johnny Creek area, we've got an abundance of turkeys. Many residents up there complaining of conflict and impact from the abundant number of birds that are up there. As a department, we manage the wildlife in Idaho. We've been working to trap and relocate the birds in the Johnny Creek area. We have not been able to keep up with the reproduction of the birds. And now they're at a point where tolerance for the birds has exceeded the patience of the residents up in that area. And so they're asking for some relief. We are out of our traditional tools to deal with this problem. And if you were to grant us an exception to the shooting ordinance that you have, it would give us another tool that we can bring to bear in this situation and help alleviate some of that conflict up in that area.
Corey, a follow-up and then Josh.
So in addition to the lethal removal, will you still be trapping?
We will, yes.
Josh? Have you done these sort of conditional or special permits in other municipalities or areas, I guess?
For sure. This is a common tool that we use across the state of Idaho. We have not done it in a municipality before. That's unique to us. But this type of activity happens in municipalities all across, all across the country. Urban hunting is a tool that folks use to address these type of complaints and concerns. And it's new to us, but it's not new in general.
Couple of follow-ups.
Absolutely.
The, one of the things that I want to just clarify in the summary, executive summary here. If I, let's say I'm a landowner up in Johnny Creek, I have to file for a permit. It says here I have to have my designees of who can hunt on that permit. So for example, if I wanted Councilmember Mangum to come up here, his name would also have to be listed on the permit. It's not just plus two hunters, it's Councilmember Mangum. And then he also has to be an active hunting license holder, correct?
Licensed hunter, that is correct. Every, when we issue a permit, we also identify any designees that would be on there at the time of issuance. We don't give a blank permit that you can fill out later. So we know everybody who's authorized to be out there. They're also all required to have a current and valid hunting license, which means they've been through Hunter Ed training and are, by all accounts, likely competent hunters.
Great. And then last question, and Mr. Mayor, if you want to jump in as well. Will the police department be notified of issuance of these permits? I'd imagine that they might get some calls from neighbors if they kind of hear or see.
Absolutely, they will be, yes.
Okay. I figured, I just wanted to make sure that that was the case.
Yeah. Before we jump to Linda, and I apologize, I just want to clarify one thing. Dan, you said this is used all over the country. This really truly is a last resort. You'll continue to trap, you'll continue to do those things. This is kind of a last resort. We're talking only turkeys. We're not talking rochucks. We're not talking deer. We're not talking anything else. We're just talking one specific species and that's it. And it's kind of the last resort.
That's correct, Mayor. We're out of options here to control these birds. We will continue to do the methods that we have been using. But at this point in time, given the level of conflict up in the Johnny Creek area, this would be a very valuable thing for those citizens up there.
Okay, super. Thank you. I apologize, Council President. I would have forgotten the question had I not asked it when I did, so.
No worries. And I had to make notes because I always forget my questions, too. I was wondering if you, and we asked you before, but for the citizens, you know, for the public, if you could talk a little bit, there's two issues. And I know we're concerned, but we're also hearing from members of the public that are concerned about the safety. And so I'd like to hear a little bit more about, you know, how you will ensure that this is safe for that neighborhood and for our citizens. And then also questions about the urgency, like why are we rushing to do this? And I think there's a good reason, but if you could explain.
Sure. I'll start with the urgency here. Right now, we've got 125 to 150 turkeys in that area. They will be heading into the breeding season in about April. We have no opportunities to control that population with existing hunt structures. That's a, the fall hunting season for turkeys has closed. And so largely, all the hens that are out there will be bred and will reproduce this coming spring. And this problem's going to grow. And so the urgency is, right now, the birds are congregated in an area where they are available. Should this permit be granted, where hunters can take advantage of that and reduce the population before they start breeding and increasing in abundance again. From a safety standpoint, it is, it is a, it is a very crowded, crowded area up there. There's a lot of houses. There is a lot of open space up there as well. And so there can be safe areas to discharge a firearm. The weapons that we would be permitting under this system would be archery or shotguns. We're not talking about 22 rifles that shoot longer distance or high-powered rifles that shoot long distance. We're talking about projectiles that are, that are small. They generally don't ricochet. And the conditions up there allow for some safe lanes of shooting. From our perspective, given the nuance of this and the complexity of the housing up there, we intend to work with each applicant for these permits to stress the importance of getting this right, working with them individually and providing them with a written letter of what they need to be thinking about, what they, you know, how to shoot safely. Many of them, all of the folks that would participate have been through Hunter's Ed. And so they've seen this before. But reiterating with them how to shoot safely in an environment where we're talking about implementing this would be, would be top of mind for us.
And one follow-up, and we would, in that process, ensure that projectiles are not going out into streets or into neighbors' properties or, you know, anything like that.
Correct.
That's part of those.
Yep. Before anybody shoots, they need to be aware of not only what they're shooting at, but what's behind that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
First, I want to say I respect what you guys do and I have no issue with hunting. But I did a survey before this started, and so roughly 6 o'clock, two dozen people responded and 75% said they're opposed. And then, what, we got four or five emails? Pretty long letters and all of those were also opposed. So besides Mr. Dunlap, how many people have wanted this to happen? And I know on my end, that's a small sample size, but do you know how many others have been actively wanting this to happen?
Enough that we are, we are and have been trapping and relocating turkeys for two years up in that area. We frequently get calls about this. I don't have a quantity of calls that we get, but we hear a lot about the issues that are up there. We also recognize that wildlife has value to Idahoans and Pocatelloans in particular. It's part of what makes our area a great place to live. It's when that wildlife becomes more abundant than the, than the social tolerance for that wildlife where we really have to intervene and really try and address some of it. So I would be shocked if we didn't have folks that were not in support of this. But we've also got folks that are, that are experiencing some conflict from this and we're just trying to balance that. And worth pointing out, we're not talking about eliminating turkeys. We're just trying to bring them back into that range where social tolerance is at a more acceptable level.
Okay. Councilmember Mangum and then Councilmember Mansfield.
So we kind of discussed this in the clarification meeting, but let's discuss follow-up a little bit. Fishing game will be, will follow up with the city of Pocatello as this progresses. Once the hunt closes, we can see exactly where we're at. And it'll still come through some checks and balances through the city, correct?
Yep. We would, we, before we issue any permits, should you guys approve this, we will be coordinating with Mayor's Office, making sure that you guys are informed on the front end. And we're also happy to come back and report on how things went and what we learned from this.
Councilmember Mansfield?
Yeah, the one other thing I wanted to highlight about a couple of the emails that we received. They're emails with folks who listed their addresses. And like two of them, for example, were in the historic college neighborhood. I understand that they might be opposed. I think it's a little bit easier to be opposed to it when you're not experiencing this problem in Johnny Creek. And so I think there are homeowners who'd be interested in it, who are actively suffering because of the number of turkeys. And so I would move for approval of agenda item seven for the request for council exemption to City Firearms Code for the Idaho Department of Fishing Game for the turkey hunt up in the Johnny Creek drainage area.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we got two seconds.
Rick, you need to say second halfway through the motion.
I want to, I want to give it to Rick.
You kept wandering on.
Because he's delayed. You took me off guard there, so thank you very much. Do we have another question before we vote on this?
Some discussion?
Discussion, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, just a couple of comments. I'd like to see a really-
Thank you.
Maybe a little greater emphasis put on the non-lethal remediation, even if the city had to, you know, put some additional money, resources towards traps or other non-lethal ways. Additionally, I'm uncomfortable with safety concerns with the discharge of firearms within the city limits.
Okay, any other discussion?
I did want to make one, and maybe this is really a question for you. I'm sorry, but if you could come back up. About the trapping, I mean, I think all of us feel a lot more comfortable with trapping and non-lethal methods than we do with lethal methods. But one of the things you mentioned, I mean, just given the scope here and the quantity, you know, trapping is not working. But I was also thinking of one other issue with trapping. And maybe this would be great for the people in Johnny Creek, but when you trap the turkeys and then you relocate them with that kind of quantity, we're just moving the problem somewhere else and someone else has to deal with it. Is that true?
In some cases, that is true. We try and be very strategic with where we introduce turkeys. We have learned some lessons over the past decade about what turkeys do and how they behave. And we look for very specific locations where there's- And we look for very specific locations where there's lots of elbow room for the birds and where we won't run into situations like this. But those areas are limited. And we're not saying that we don't have places to move these birds, because we do, and that's why we're still able to trap and relocate. But you can't just move them anywhere, because you do end up creating additional problems in some instances.
Somewhere else. And you also said earlier that trapping becomes less efficient when you trap in a certain area over time, that the birds wise up, they don't go into the traps?
Right. They see their friends get caught and never see them again. And they learn that that's maybe not the best thing for them. And so they can learn, and they avoid those traps over time. And your effort becomes, it gives you limited returns on your actions.
Okay.
Okay. I've got Cory and then Josh.
Part of what, the question that you're asking, part of trapping is you got to trap a bird twice. You got to trap them one time, then you test them, then you let them back out, then you re-trap them again, and you're not catching the same bird twice. And so none of us want to see guns just being shot within the city. But this is kind of the, this is where we're at. And so I appreciate you guys and the diligence and the research that has gone into all of this to make sure that this is safe and to make sure that it's effective. We talked about poison. Poison will not do, because then other animals or even people can be mixed up in that also. And so it becomes even more detrimental. And so this is probably the best course of action at this moment.
Councilmember Mangum? Mansfield? Mansfield. I said Mangum, didn't I? Mansfield.
We look the same.
You two have to move. You can move Josh to this other side, and it's in our eyes.
Roll Rick over here.
That's right.
Um, I think that, I think, I want to clear up a little bit of a misconception as well. I grew up hunting turkeys as well, and that was out near Lava. And you would hike over a ridge, and all of a sudden, there was a house there that was not in a municipality, that was built out, you know, what would be county land or wherever. And there was a house there. And as Idaho continues to grow, and then in other, as mentioned, other areas, I mean, I had an uncle who was down in the south, and they would step out their back door and start hunting. As the community and the growth of population continues, hunting is going to always be up along the fringes of urban life, whether that's in a municipality, in a county area. And that's an unfortunate reality, but I think that puts into perspective that we can, and I think fishing game, especially in this conditional permit, is creating a system that does absolutely create and foster the conditions to ensure the greatest level of safety. And it's not like, you know, hunting is always just hours and hours away from civilization. It oftentimes can border up against urban life, and I don't think that's something that's unique. I think Johnny Creek is a condition where you have urban life and the wildlife kind of beginning to border. That happens across the state of Idaho, and whether it's in a municipality or not, that doesn't, that's going to happen. And unfortunately, wildlife doesn't know the end of city bounds. And so that's, for me, this isn't as like this, this super unique, never, you know, we've never seen people near urban populations hunting. I also don't think it's a picture of people just walking down the middle of the street, looking left and right for turkey. So it's, I think that clarification and context is important when we consider kind of, and picture what this is going to look like.
Thank you. And it's Paulson, right? I mean, I'm getting the right, Paulson, okay, I'm getting the right one.
Hey, Mayor, Rick is raising his hand, too.
Okay, and then after Hayden, we've got Rick.
So sorry you had to come back up. But so I am skeptical of how many will actually be killed to put a dent in the population at the increased risk of either injury or damage, well, injury to people or damage to property from shooting. Do you see, or estimate how much will actually be killed?
I cannot. That's a really great question. One, two likely outcomes. One, we harvest enough birds that we bring the population back into a more desirable range. The second option or potential outcome is the birds stop hanging out in a group of 150, and they disperse into smaller bands that are more easy to tolerate than the big bands that they currently are. And so either one of those is possible here.
Okay, thank you. Rick?
You know, I want to expand just a minute on what Dan just said. You know, the typical fall turkey hunting process involves breaking up flocks and then calling them back in, one or two, the ones that you want to take. And I hope this will happen with this gigantic flock that's been allowed to accumulate in Johnny Creek. It would be a good thing to break that flock up, maybe chase some of them to other areas within our community. The other point is, this will be a new tool, Friday fishing game across the state of Idaho, after we proved that this works in Pocatello. I'm familiar with a, you know, in Wyoming, antelope hunting, pronghorn hunting's a big deal. And I'm familiar with one community over there that has an annual season where they hunt antelope on their golf course. And you get your golf clubs and your rifle, and you go out and you take one on a hole and move on. It's a problem for wildlife as people continue to inhabit where they've traditionally lived. And I, for one, am going to vote for this motion, and I hope I make it home in time to participate.
You better make a friend in the Johnny Creek area if you're going to do that.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, yes. How many, how many birds can one hunter shoot?
So that would be specified on the permit. And we, depending on what kind of interest we get, where the, you know, if the problem is very localized in one area, we may prescribe a higher number of birds per permit in that location. But if it's more dispersed, and we'll know that once we start hearing from the public, we may take a different tact and try and spread that harvest around a little bit more evenly.
Thank you.
Okay, super. Any other comments? Okay, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, Aubriana, we have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Mangum. Would you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Nichols?
No.
Paulson?
No.
Okay, thank you very much, and we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you.
So they can, they'll be able to start issuing some permits quickly. With that, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Eight is Short Plaid Application Olympus Junction Subdivision. Council may wish to approve a short plaid application submitted by Jonathan Balls, representing the Pocatello Chubbick School District 25, represented by Sunrise Engineering. A subdivide, two subdivide 23.65 acres, more or less, into two lots. The property is located at the northeast corner of Olympus Drive and Jerome Street. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards of the Pocatello Municipal Code, assuming compliance with the conditions listed in the staff report.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to approve Agenda Item Eight as outlined.
With conditions?
With the conditions.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Mangum and a second by Councilmember Mansfield. Got it right that time. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Nine, Fiscal Year 2024 Program of Projects Public Transit. Council may wish to approve the 2024 Operating and Capital Program of Projects for Public Transit Urban Services and authorize the mayor and city attorney to pin the grant certification 5307 and authorize the public transit director to make the necessary amendments to and modifications related to their grants and require, as required, subject to the legal department review, for the Federal Transit Administration Urban Grants 5307 in the amount of $1,395,534 for fiscal year 2024, with a local share of $798,884.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to approve Agenda Item Nine as specified under this agenda item, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Mansfield. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Ten, Idaho State Historic Preservation Office Certified Local Government Grant Application. Council may wish to authorize submission of the fiscal year FY 2024 Certified Local Government Grant Application to the Idaho State Historic Preservation Office. This year's application is in the amount of $20,000 with an in-kind match of $20,000 in administrative, in administration grants, general support. The proposed project for this year includes updating the National Registry for the Downtown Historic District and relist the district on the National Register of Historic Places. The council may wish to authorize submission of the grant, and if awarded, authorize acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I won't do this one. I move that we approve the grant submission for, to the Idaho State Historic Preservation Office for the Certified Local Government Grant. And if awarded, authorize your, authorize acceptance of the grant and the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second. Okay, okay. We've got a motion by Council President Lurick and a second by Councilmember Nichols. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Cheetum?
No.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Agenda Item Eleven, Idaho State Parks and Recreation Mountain Bike Plate Fund Grant Application, Pioneer Ridge Trailhead Access Improvements. Council may wish to approve a grant application for the state fiscal year 2025 Idaho State Parks and Recreation Mountain Bike Plate Fund for the Pioneer Ridge Trailhead Access Improvements, and if awarded, authorize acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. The total project cost is $9,325.36, and it requires a 5% match. The match cost will be funded by in-kind staff time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve Agenda Item Eleven as specified, authorizing acceptance of the grant if awarded, authorizing your signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Mansfield. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Twelve, Local Highway Technical Assistance Council 2024 LHSIP Grant Application. Council may wish to approve a grant application for the Local Highway Technical Assistance Council 2024 LHSIP Grant Application for the Highline Flandreau Signalization Project, and if awarded, authorize acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. The total project cost is $1,891,000 and requires a 7.34% local match to be funded by Fund 70.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the grant application to the Local Highway Technical Assistance Council as outlined in Agenda Item Number Twelve, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents and authorize the acceptance of the grant if awarded, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by President Lurick and a second by Councilmember Mangum. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Thirteen, Airport Grant Agreement and Resolution. Council may wish to approve a grant agreement and adopt a resolution and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents accepting a grant offer from the Idaho Transportation Department Division of Aeronautics, subject to legal department review. Their grant is for $20,000, which will be used to provide required match funds for the FAA Airport Improvement Program Grant Funds. The project to be completed using the funds include the design of Apron, reconstruction, ceiling of Apron, pavement, and remarking runway 3-21.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move that we approve Agenda Item Thirteen as outlined. Yeah, as outlined, approve and authorize your signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second. Can we ask a question real quick?
Absolutely. We have a motion and a second. Alan, would you?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Alan Evans, Airport Manager, Pocatello Regional Airport.
Hey, Alan. A question for you. Is this the part of the project that when you came before us for the airport master plan, there were, there were like three items where we were not in compliance by some minor points? Was this part of it, the Apron?
No, this, this is actually some seal coating that will be done, crack sealing, seal coating. And then there is a section of pavement that is not quite at the strength that we feel it needs to be for where it's located.
Okay. This doesn't target one of those, because there was, there was the one spot in terms of the turn that didn't have, it was.
Oh, no, that is not part of that.
That's not, that's not it.
That is a taxiway going to the secondary runway, which has some alignment issues in a safety area.
Okay, and that's not, that's not this. Okay, all right. Thanks.
That would be cheap.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Mangum and a second by Mansfield. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Fourteen, Resolution Airport Lease Agreement, Grayside Properties. Council may wish to adopt a resolution and approve a lease agreement with Grayside Properties for approximately 9,577 square feet of property upon which they will build three adjoining hangars for aircraft storage and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. The rental rate will be $2,135.67 per year. Term is 30 years with a 10-year renewal to be increased annually by the CPI, with a full rate review in 2026 and every five years thereafter.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to approve Agenda Item Fourteen as outlined. So approving your signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Mangum and a second by Mansfield. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Agenda Item Fifteen, An Ordnance. An ordinance approving an amendment to fiscal year 2024 appropriations, ordinance increasing the total fiscal year expenditures by $7,383,046 to account for additional revenues, including grant funds received by the city and to use previously unappropriated cash balance for unanticipated expenses incurred by the city. Council, how do you wish to have this agenda item, have the ordinance read?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Mansfield.
I would move that the ordinance, Agenda Item Number Fifteen, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that the whole ordinance be submitted for publication.
Second.
I have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Mangum. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, amending ordinance number 3128, the appropriation ordinance for the fiscal period October 1, 2023 through September 30, 2024, providing for an increase in expenditures in the following funds: General Fund, Street Fund, Airport Fund, Transit Urban Fund, Science and Environment Fund, Sanitation Fund, Water Fund, Water Pollution Control Fund, Ambulance Fund, Information Technology Fund, and Police Retirement Fund, which increases the total fiscal year expenditures by $7,383,046, providing that the revenue to pay for said increases shall be derived from grants, unexpected revenues, and previously unappropriated cash balances, providing that all other portions of ordinance number 3128 shall remain in full force and effect, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval and publication, according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass? Aubriana, would you please, yes?
Cheetum?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Sixteen, Items from the Audience. This time has been set aside to hear items from the audience not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there is fifteen minutes total for this agenda item and three minutes per speaker. Uh, we'll go ahead and get started. Nikki Tason.
Thank you, Nikki Tason, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho 83201. I'm here to address two concerns. I'm coming for the council. I've been coming to these meetings a long time since 2011, and there's been multiple situations where, um, public consumption of alcohol has been approved in violation of city ordinances, as well as lifted in other areas, including at parks, um, at the Lookout Point Playground, and I've been to those events, and even when it was roped off and said, "No alcohol behind," you know, beyond this rope, people were inside that drinking alcohol. And a lot of these people are attending with children who are then getting in vehicles with adults who've been consuming alcohol. As well as allowing, the city passed an ordinance or resolution, I can't remember now, but it was maybe five years ago or so, where they approved children having access to be in the bar sections of restaurants and bars that serve food. And I noticed that Oasis Bar now allows children in that bar, and it's a block from the high school. I've been in that bar, and I've seen children in there and youth who are not happy to be there, just like in other places where there's restaurants, like Mama Inez actually had a separate bar from the restaurant.